Okay, it's 6:30. I'd like to call this meeting to order, starting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
I have allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started, as we all know, today marks the 22nd year anniversary of 9/11. And remembering all those who lost on that tragic day and since then in our military conflicts overseas, I would like to take a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. All right, has everybody had an opportunity to look at the manifests? The AP 9-5 and the payroll from 9-5?
I did.
You did? Any questions, comments, anything? No?
Make a motion.
Okay.
To approve the manifest, accounts payable of 9-5 and the payroll of 9-5.
I second.
Okay, motion made by Steve Welch, seconded by Tim DeBrio, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Ben Barlett.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Okay, unanimous. Public minutes on 8:21, 23.
I think there was just a couple of changes I had suggested. Line 6, there's a misspelling, should read "sign."
All right.
And then line 18, Mr. Sherlin read the corrections of those minutes, not me. And then in line 93 is a duplicate of lines 87 and 88, which should be removed.
Okay. So you want to make a motion as amended?
Yes, make a motion as amended above to approve the minutes in the August 21st meeting.
Second, okay, motion made by Tim DeBrio, seconded by Steve Welch, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Ben Barlett.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Okay, approve non-public minutes on 8:21.
Make a motion to approve the non-public meetings of 8:21.
I'll second.
Motion made by Steve Welch, seconded by John Moore, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Ben Barlett.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Unanimous, okay. Okay, assigned boards and committees.
One thing, as we go through this, we had a joint meeting for the planning board, so I'll go over that. But one of the things, decision we need to make tonight, is are we running CIP or are they? You're our CIP rep, so the select board is, for the many years that I've been doing this, has been usually the leader, you know, taking control of the CIP or setting it up and stuff like this.
Yeah.
Mostly probably because the fact is to do with budget money and stuff like this.
So it was...
But if you read how it is, it is actually more of a planning board, divisional board than it is a select board.
Right.
So, do we want to continue going the way that we've been doing it for these past, I don't know how many years now, is that, is you're gonna take the realm, you'll set up who's gonna be on, you'll get the budget committee member on there, you'll get the planning board member on there, your select member, you'll get a public member.
And a school board member, right?
You're gonna take care of...
So if I could just make a quick comment on that. I know that in the past, the planning board really were taking a hands-off approach to that, hence why we were running it. Now, I'm not opposed for us to continue to do it, however, it really does fall on the planning board and I think that we should at least give them the opportunity to...
So the decision was asked for us to make the decision, are we making them do it or are we doing it? We can't go back to the planning board and ask them to, they wanna know whether, what we wanna do.
I think in the, you know, it really should be in their realm. So if everybody's in agreement, I think they should handle it. But I'm open for discussion, Joe, John.
I'm not sure how I feel about that.
Yeah.
You've been, you've served on.
I have served on it and, and again, you know, in the past, the board has taken the lead on it and it worked out well, but it really belongs in the hands of the planning board, in my opinion. I'm not opposed to the board continuing with the mindset of running the CIP, but I think we should at least give the planning board the opportunity to have it back at their seat.
So if that's the way we go, we're telling the planning board that the BOS does not wanna be in charge anymore, it's your job and you want me to tell them Wednesday that Ed, as chair, you need to set this up. This is your responsibility now. That's what we're going to do.
If that is the will of the board, yes.
Again, we can go back up to the will of the board, they're gonna tell us to do it, just like what we're doing.
Well, no, no, I mean this board, the will of this board, if that's what they wanna do, hand it off to them, I'm all for it.
I think they want us to make the decision of which way we're going. That's the end result.
Right, but what I'm...
We're telling them that they're doing it.
But I'd like for all of us to weigh in on it, is what I'm trying to say.
Do you think it falls into the planning board, John, or no?
Yeah, but again, we've done it one way, have you wanna change the wheel? Sure. You want them to do it, uh, fine. Again, but since it's money-wise and budget-wise, I mean, that's why I think the reason why we always took care of it, because it's the stuff that we're, it's our budget, I mean, BOS's budget, and basically the...
It is about the budget, but it's about the long-term forecasting. So the CIP is supposed to be to manage your capital assets that have a three-year longer useful life and a $10,000, exactly. So it is, it's a forecasting and the planning and then how you get to that point. So it does kind of fall more under the planning board's purview, under the master plan and like what we're trying to work toward in town.
Right, since the budget committee, I mean, again.
I can go either way, John.
I'm new to this all, I kinda like the selectmen being in charge of it, but again, pretty new to the process, so I'd rely on people...
You'll still be the rep, but what's your thought?
I mean, I've, typically, it looks like there's only been one meeting in the past four years, each year.
Yeah, but this, I've been on the, I was on that board seven years ago or whatever it was and we had like five meetings. We were meeting with every department head, one-on-one, we were doing, I mean, it was a, it was more of a process to go over and them explaining, this is what we're looking, this is what we're looking for, this is what, I mean, and explaining to the members of the CIP what these expenditures were gonna be and what they were looking for in five years, three years. And it was more than one meeting to get every department, instead of them just handing a piece of paper and you're reading the piece of paper saying, "Well, I think this is what it is." I mean, you probably wanna ask the guy who's putting it in their potential future budget or, you know, what? Whoa, what is this? Where do you see in five years your department to be or, you know, for needs or wants, you know?
But do you think that'd be better served under the Board of Selectmen or the Planning Board?
Put me on the spot on this question.
No pressure.
Let's see. I mean, we have, I mean, nobody, I don't know who was on, who was on the, from the planning board last year that was on the CIP?
I don't recall.
Tim DeBrio's the only one that's listed on the website right now, I know that...
Sandra. She on the planning board, Sandra Jones.
I don't know if she was or not, I know...
Budget.
Budget was Robert Kelly.
Yes.
Who else was on there, Gene Reed? I'm just trying to...
Oh, last year.
Not last year?
No.
Okay.
Also, obviously, we gotta do a better job, so... I think we should keep it, have this board running.
All right, Steve, you're in favor of that?
That's how I feel.
Okay.
All right, we're keeping it.
I'll reach out to the boards and get something on the calendar.
And then you work without getting it, well, you've been on the, have you been, done, see it here before?
No.
Ah, all right, well, you figure out, giving department heads in, going over. Uh, so again, that was something we talked about at the planning board, the other planning board meeting. Now, we had a lot discussed, it was a joint meeting with the zoning board. We had the building inspector here also with the meeting and we were looking at different policies that are on the planning board. One of the things we have to do here as the Board of Selectmen is our fees that we're charging developers aren't in line with the fees of what other towns are charging. We are too light.
Yeah.
And I don't see, you know, builders feel comfortable coming in, this is my opinion right here. Builders feel comfortable coming in, putting these subdivisions and putting these houses at this price here, you know, our fee should be adequate, we should be the cheapest town around. So, as you got an email from the planning board this week, they should've showed you some of the fees for what a subdivision is. If you didn't, I saw it online.
Saw it online.
Okay, we'll make sure that that could be sent out to you.
Okay.
But that's something we need to address pretty soon. Uh, 'cause again, they're outdated towards what other towns are. And I studied, I sort of have a better room of computer to over it with you, but I'll get that sent to you to make sure that the fees for those are...
So just out of curiosity, John, you know, what if it's already a pre-existing dwelling and they wanted to put up a barn? Should they be subject to an impact fee? It's just a barn?
No, no, they don't, I haven't got an impact fee, that's a whole different thing.
I mean, the, what you said there, the fee there.
Well, you gotta have your butters fees, if you're going, usually on a case like this, if you're going for a permit, I mean, there isn't besides a notification of butters or your fee for the building permit, that's it. There isn't, on a subdivision, it's a whole different, you pay a fee for each house lot that you're building, you pay a fee, I mean, so there's, there's more to a brand-new subdivision than there is for a single lot. But then we did talk about impact, that's all. So, you need to see that, I thought he sent it out to everybody.
I did not see it.
Uh, it was on my email or he just sent it to me, I thought it was...
Maybe he thought you were gonna distribute it to us.
Probably distribute it through his planning board committee.
Uh, well, I'll make sure you guys get it tomorrow. Uh, but it's something we need to look at for those fees, 'cause we're in charge of what the fees are, not that board. So we set what the fees are.
Okay.
We did talk also about the impact fees and how they were affecting the town, how much money we're giving back. You know, there's people that are hard in favor of impact fees, but the fees were designed to put in there how many years ago, but they were designed in there to, obviously, for the growth impacts, you know, for us to spend money and to help the tax rate, you know, instead of spending tax, building a house, builder or whatever, for the money. The fire departments paid off now, that was one of the revenues that they were using. So there might, there's discussion of how we might focus where the money for the fees go to. Because the school is getting tons of money, but they haven't spent any, nothing.
Well, I mean, we have a police department that could use some of that.
Only if they're building new structures.
Right, but eventually, at some point, we're gonna, they're gonna...
Well, again, that's absolutely, but we have, we have to change it, so if that, again, CIP says if the police department is getting a new building in three years, this is not happening, this is just hypothetical conversation, if, then we would probably wanna see a large portion of those new impact fees go towards...
Yeah.
That investment, that'll pay off. I mean, that's literally what they were doing, when they were paying up the bond for the fire department.
So just refresh everybody at home, what do we currently have impact fees for?
Uh, school, I mean, what are they for, where are they going?
What are they set up for right now?
School, rec, fire, and police.
Okay.
But it's set up differently, who's getting more money, who's getting less money and on the scale.
Might wanna look at adding the highway department to that.
Again, that's all, one of the things too, that was for, one of the conversations we had was for a transfer station.
Yeah, yeah.
We can definitely put new buildings and do new stuff there, so we could be taking that money out of somebody else and maybe moving that line item over there, so that money can be spent into improving that building with new things that are gonna be, a lot of good things could be bought. You know, that could be added there. It's a building that's not the greatest, you know, and it has to be something new.
Yeah.
You know, you can't...
Can't renovate.
You can't use it as a thing, right? But, you know, let's say the place needed AC, you wanted to add a brand-new AC system, 'cause there's no AC in the building, you could use an impact fee to add AC to that building.
But not to repair one.
Not to repair it, no, but to add a new one.
Right. Or replace it. Not applicable.
No, but if you were adding an impact fee to build a new shed to put tires and it was a whole new structure you were building, you're building a whole new, and that's... So, it was a good two-hour meeting and there's gonna be another meeting and then again, you know, one of the questions was also, that always comes up, is the fact on subdivisions, how even with interest rates as high as they are and in houses at the price they are, why Nottingham keeps growing at a, you know, decent pace? So that's what we were talking with the building inspector on lots and then, one of the things that we also talked about was a big factor was when we were talking, started talking about affordable housing for people, was we have tight parameters on what we used to think for ADUs, which is auxiliary dwelling units. And the fact that so many new families now are getting to the fact of having nuclear families, you'd say, you know, parents are looking with the kids or whatever like this, is that an ADU has a real low impact on the town. You know, but it's a good way to, you know, help out. So, in different ways of revising and looking into what we have for policies for ADU to maybe more promote stuff like that. 'Cause again, they're not, it's not a full house, you're not gonna get six people living in one, you know, or, I mean, you know, house for that, you know. The elderly, or parents, or, could be for a single person looking to rent a place or something, but it's affordable housing.
And that's, that's something Nottingham has struggled with for a long time.
They don't have affordable housing.
Right.
What is ADU, example?
Auxiliary dwelling unit. So that was part of our discussion too. So both boards realized it's quite a bit and then that was discussed around a lot of the things going in front of the zoning board and how many meetings they're going for, about setback regulation, regs, and how, you know, enforcement of those. Dale asked the question of why is, why are we making somebody go from the zoning board when they're just approving them? You know, I mean, they're making, the zoning board is making people change things in order to try to meet them, but we have all these rules which people are supposed to adhere by in order to build, but there's always the really, the zoning board, it feels like some people are, or people, if you look at the history, maybe are taking advantage of using the zoning board in order to get what they want without trying to adhere to the rules that are set up in the zoning board. So that was another part of the discussion that was brought in. So again, so we're probably have another meeting, because again, there was a lot to, lots to digest in two hours. And again, there's more to talk about, so I do believe, I don't have, I think we set the date for it yet, but we do have another meeting that I have.
Okay, budget?
So there was a budget committee meeting, I was not there. I think basically they were just setting up dates for future meetings, assigning Navy boards.
Yeah, it was a restructuring, a reorganization meeting, they're talking about establishing some, not necessarily, I guess you could call them rules of procedure, they referenced Robert's rules for small, small groups. We talked a lot about the school adequacy grant that's coming. There's a special hearing coming up on October 2nd, the budget committee has to have a special meeting for... We are going to be accepting, or the school accepts the state adequacy grants, but they want to have a warrant article to be able to expend those funds to add them into their trust funds for this year, rather than have it go into the general fund and offset the tax rate. So their next meeting coming up was going to be September 28th and is specifically to deal with that. And then we just set up the calendar for the upcoming budget cycle. And that will be, I'm not sure if Kelly had a chance to post it online yet, but it will be posted if it's not.
CIP hasn't met, Marson?
The dugouts started to be built this past week, this past week, so...
Yeah, I went by on Saturday, I saw the guys up there building them.
Yeah.
Who's the dugouts?
Yeah.
I'm the hippie.
Yeah.
All right, Town Administrator Report?
All right. The first thing that I have for you is I met with Pete Lachapelle at Waste Management, contract, our five-year contract for municipal solid waste transportation and disposal is due to expire December 31st of this year. He has given me a contract extension for you to consider, it's attached to my report. This would be in lieu of putting it out for proposals for service this year. It is built into the current contract where the agreement, the current agreement may be extended for one additional period of five years, subject to mutually agreeable pricing terms, which have been included. So our option is to go with the contract extension, using the pricing that he supplied to us or if you put it out to RFP, obviously, this pricing wouldn't be valid, this is to continue the contract and the relationship with the town. So I've given that to you for consideration, again, in lieu of putting out for a proposal, so we can, if you want a chance to digest it, we can discuss it next week.
Yes.
Northeast Resource Recovery Association came out and provided a assessment of our recycling center facility back in July. Tim and I were both present, Bonnie Bethune from NARA came out and did the assessment and she's supplied us with a packet of information for consideration. As I commented before, you know, the facility is in good condition for its age and what we're working with. Obviously, there's always room for improvement and they're willing to help us along the way, so. The new Baco that we purchased for the recycling center with all the attachments, it arrived last Thursday. We've put the plow and the sander back on the F-350 that we turned over there, they're actually going to take care of most of their winter maintenance over there, they're gonna make sure that the yard is plowed and ready to accept patrons and also sanded and safe. It's one less thing that the highway department has to worry about, so we've got the equipment, they're gonna be utilizing it, that and the Baco. Uh, we are, Steve Parkinson, the interim director, and I are working with subcontractors for the winter road maintenance. I have reached out to everybody that has serviced the town in the past, requested some equipment information and their rates, so we're working through that and hopefully we'll get the contracts awarded by the end of this month in preparation for winter, which is right around the corner. We have been given some assistance from John Farnold, he stepped forward and he's helping us grade some of our dirt roads. We don't have a current grader operator at the moment, so he was willing to do that, so I've brought him back on per diem just to help us. He's got a window of the next two weeks, so he's going to get as many dirt roads done as possible with our highway department and so helping out as much as possible.
Making quite the headway with it, so...
He is, he is, he's doing a fantastic job, we're receiving a lot of comments.
As a member of a person who's living in a boat, he's doing a great job.
I live on the same road, yes.
So I give high grades on grading.
So you look for a part-time job?
It's not like he doesn't have the experience. We have some roadside mowing underway, Freeman Hall was started last week and the other roads to be addressed include Ledge Farm, Poor Farm, Garrish, Stevens Hill, Ann Canard. And with fall being right around the corner, the one thing that I omitted from here is they'll be starting the, I think it's the final year of our Japanese knotweed program, management program. So they have to wait until the knotweed actually flowers, blooms and flowers and then at that point, they treat it. So they'll be addressing areas, they're gonna be around town checking to see if there's been additional growth and treating is necessary. And then we'll be looking forward for whether we need to continue that management program, but it has been very successful.
Who's doing that mowing?
Talco.
Okay.
Wait, are you talking, which mowing, are we talking about the fields?
Roadside.
Roadside mowing is Brandon Talco, Talon, Talco Construction. And he's also doing the landfill mowing as well. I met with Jeff Torrig from R&amp;D Paving last Tuesday, obviously with weather delays, we experienced paving delays. So he was out last week, he's got Deerfield Road all marked up for dig-safe and they could be starting as early as later this week, they're finishing a small project in Jackson and then moving to Nottingham, so that will be in accordance with the RFP that we put out earlier this year. Northern Tree Service is providing tree cutting for EverSource along the power line, so you'll see them, you'll see the blue and white markers that are on most of the trees. I met with their field rep. There was obviously, I think there was four trees that they were concerned with out here, the white pines in the lower parking lot. I spoke with them and asked about potentially removing them all, because eventually they're gonna become a problem, they're very large trees. And just to see what we could do, if anything, to have them removed and then think about maybe like planting something in their place, ornamental with time, that isn't going to be a problem down the road. So he spoke with the arborist and EverSource is willing to pick up that entire cost to have them removed. It's gonna require a crane service because they're much larger developed trees. What will happen is we're gonna have to set up a staging area just because of the side of the trees, so we'd have to close down the lower parking lot. It will be a day, they operate between the hours of 7:00 and 3:00, so it should not impact the school bus pickup in the morning or the drop-off in the afternoon and they'll make sure of that. I also told them that we have the election next week, so if it happens prior to the election, everything's gonna be cleared up before or it has to take place after Tuesday's election, 'cause we need to make sure that all that parking is available to the voters. So that could be happening this week. We do need to set up a flagging crew just to help, as there are gonna be roadside. So we're trying to work out the details, whether or not we can get that worked out this week and have the weather in our favor is the question, so I'll be able to keep you posted. The gasoline fuel cube is scheduled for installation at the Smoke Street Pit tomorrow. Hartman Oil is doing that for us. Along with all the other air conditioners at town buildings, one of the two condensers at the fire station malfunctioned, there was melted internal parts, it needs to be replaced. I met with Clarence last week. This is a estimated $4,850 repair, there are two condensers, so right now, the other one is working, double time to try to keep the building cool, but this is kind of one of those things where, you know, do we fix it now or do we wait until next year? With the warmer weather we've been experiencing, it's a repair that's happening. So my question is, the question to you is, do you want me to try to absorb this within the operating budget or we have approximately $15,000 left in that building maintenance capital reserve fund established for these purposes of emergency repair, do we want to withdraw it from there?
Well, we gotta fix it.
Yes, but how many more?
I know. So, I mean, this is something that, you know, I can try to work it within the operating budget and as we get closer to the end of the year and really starting to, I mean, we're there at that point now. Really just trying to see what's left for available funds and then we can make the determination if we have to pull it from that reserve fund.
Okay.
Okay.
It could be, but we have to fix it as soon as possible, you know, it's a delay.
That's where the cooling?
Mm-hmm.
September and October do get hot.
You know, we delay and we try to call somebody like in April or March or whenever, when everybody starts doing it, then we could be at a point where it's not working, we're in a hot part of the season in May.
So you're saying fix it?
We're gonna fix it, we'll figure out...
No, no, I mean, you're saying fix it now or wait?
I think we're just delaying.
It's, it's being fixed, I've authorized the repair, it's just a matter of where the money's coming from.
Okay, well, guess it is, answers that question.
I'll take that decision right off your plate. The general election's scheduled for next Tuesday, the 19th, we will be starting the setup. I still have to get together with the moderator and the supervisors to see when they might be available, but we have nothing going on in the community center on Monday that I'm aware of, I'll double-check that with the rec, but I think we can set up at any point on Monday. So I'll be calling in all hands that are available, obviously, our staff will be able to assist, the highway department's on, call for whenever we need them. All of the election materials, the supplies and everything should be in this building after the moisture issue we had at the old fire station, we pulled everything and kept it here, so. If any of you are available to help at some point during the day on Monday, please let me know. There shouldn't be too much, like I said, I mean, like we'll be schlepping it down the hallway, so it's not a matter of moving it from locations, it's just the setup that's a pain, probably two-hour commitment, maybe a little bit more. I have ordered stanchion ropes, the plaque and the flags for our... I have ordered stanchion ropes, the plaque and the flags for our POW MIA Chair of Honor that was donated to us by Rolling Thunder. I would like to schedule a dedication ceremony, I'm waiting on the plaque, it's probably gonna be another week or so, but I would like to set up a dedication ceremony in October, and I just need to know from you whether you want it to be part of a regular selectmen's meeting, or if you want to do a separate ceremony, at which point then I would invite Rolling Thunder to be here, and obviously anybody from the public, we would publicize it.
Make it a separate event, makes sense.
Yeah, we're getting into the budget season and everything like that, so our meetings are probably gonna be pretty packed. What is, what is your thought on a separate?
Just get it done.
Okay, separate.
Okay. I'll reach out to you individually and see what we can get scheduled. What else do I have? I have an open email request from Sandra Vilchok dated 9/8/2023 to unseal the minutes of the February 27th, March 20th, and March 23rd of '23 non-public sessions for you to consider. And I just gave you a small excerpt from RSA 91-A:3,3 regarding minutes of meetings in non-public session.
Can you read these out for the folks at home?
Sure will. Minutes of meetings in non-public session shall be kept and record of all actions shall be promptly made available for public inspection, except as provided in this section. Minutes of such session shall record all actions in such a manner that a vote of each member is ascertained and recorded. Minutes and decisions reached in non-public session shall be publicly disclosed within 72 hours of the meeting, unless by recorded vote, two-thirds of the members present taken in public session. It is determined that divulgence of the information likely would affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself. I did not add the entire language from that RSA, just what was pertinent. So, the bottom line is minutes can only be withheld from the public as long as circumstances that led to the vote still exist. Once those circumstances no longer exist, there's no obligation, there is an obligation to unseal the minutes. There is a House bill that passed that will change this RSA to require a review and unsealing of the minutes eventually. That comes up in October. The determination of whether circumstances still justify keeping the minute sealed should be made by the vote of the board rather than administrative staff, so I'm turning this over to you for a decision as to whether you want to consider the unsealing of those non-public minutes, which pertain to the complaint investigation.
Discussion?
Personally, I think they should stay sealed until after this is all done and said with.
John?
Personal feelings.
Okay, we'll leave them sealed.
Okay, I will respond accordingly. And then the, the last of the correspondence that I have for you to review, we have a series of emails that were received from Jay Vilchok. Ben Bartlett responded on behalf of the board with the responses that were approved from the August 21st meeting. I'm not sure if there's further responses due.
Everybody remember seeing the 21st, so we're good, we're all in agreement? Okay.
And I am all set, I just have a request for two non-public sessions.
Okay. All right, action items, review from last meeting. I have down below here, Marston Property renaming poll.
Yes, so Kelly is working on that, we will have a renaming poll up on the website, I'm not sure, check it, I apologize. I think she was gonna try to get it ready for today, not sure if it's there, but there will be a renaming poll on the website, if it's not there already, it will be posted probably tomorrow, where people can go on and they can cast their vote for what they would like to see, if any renaming of the Marston Recreation Area.
So, we're not given the option of what we should name it, it's either keep it the name that it is now, or renaming it in honor of Brown?
So, the option is to keep it as is, one of the recommendation was to name it the Brown Field, or the Charles Brown Field, and then there's a, there's gonna be like a fill-in, your response, and then that will be presented to you for future consideration.
All right. Kevin Bassett?
I'm sorry, what did you?
Is that gold binding, binding?
No, it's, no, it's just a, it's a suggestion poll, if you want the name changed.
Basically, this gets public input. Assessing? Looks like we have some timber abatement.
Make a motion to accept the timber yield abatement on map 15, lot 1-7.
Aye, second.
All right, Steve Welch made the motion, seconded by Tim DeBrio, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Joe Moore.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Okay, unanimous?
One thing when we're talking about assessing, for everybody that built a new house, or anybody that's built a new house, or owns a new house, there was a, Kelly sent around to schedule an appointment with Avatar if you wanted to come in to check it out. Is that still going on?
Yes.
So, you can still schedule an appointment if you want, to have Avatar come and give you a full evaluation of your house?
They're, um...
They're setting appointments.
Yes, they're setting up appointments, and it was only to, I don't think it was sent to all property owners, I think it was...
No, it's for new properties, or something like this, right, it was for everybody, it was for new properties, without mentioning this.
All right.
We have the Lex tax one. Make a motion for map 616, lot 16, for the Lex abatement, which we overcharged, which we owe them money back.
Aye, second.
Motion made by John Moore, and seconded by Tim DeBrio, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Joe Moore.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Unanimous? unanimous one to review signing. I don't see that.
It should be in your signature file.
Yeah. Ah, yes, okay. All right, we'll sign this at the end. Does she wanna start it? Okay. General business, dry hydrant RFP. Everybody got a copy of that?
Do. We just need to approve to send it out, correct?
No, we have two that responded.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
I don't think, you don't have copies of the actual response, because they were due in by 3:30.
Okay. There were a sealed bid?
No, it's just a request for proposal.
Okay.
One's out of Raymond, one's out of Lee.
I think the estimate's on the last page.
And replacing, it was something that we can't do internally?
We don't have the equipment operator experience to be able to do so.
Okay.
Originally, that was the plan.
It's too bad. Okay, so we have one for 15,000, and one for 10,750.
Both providing the same service?
Looks like it's providing the same service, it's the number of viewing right now. So, this one has a little more detail.
What's that timeframe, can we table it till next meeting, till we all have a time, a chance to digest? Prolong things.
How long we've been waiting on, now?
Too long. I can say $5,000, I'm all about it, as long as it's providing the same service.
Your meeting again next week.
I know, yeah. That's why I suggested.
If you're comfortable waiting until next week.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind having a chance to review in more detail.
Okay, we'll table it till next week. Emergency Management Director.
Currently, Chief Fon Woodman is our Acting Emergency Management Director, according to FEMA. And she is willing, I will talk, I will talk for her. She is willing to assume the responsibility, should you choose to appoint her.
I think it's a no-brainer, she's in town pretty much all the time. If we have an emergency, hopefully she's available to take care of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. John? Yeah. Do you need a vote?
Um, yes, if I could, because I will supply minutes to home security.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Now, you gotta make a motion.
Make a motion to appoint Fon Woodman as our Emergency Management Director.
A second.
Okay, motion made by Steve Welch, seconded by Tim DeBrio, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Joe Moore.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Okay, unanimous?
Ben, was she come, is she come on either interim or what's her current status?
Well, she's now the official emergency. She's kinda like acting, I guess, yeah. Department liaison assignments. Like that, Matt's input on this, but does anybody know what his thought is?
I don't.
No, we'll table that till next week. If you guys are good with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Policies review. I know I've looked at some of them, has everybody else had an opportunity to take a look?
I'm halfway through the binder.
There's one thing that I don't know if the rest of the board feels the same, but I'm kinda surprised at just how thin it is. You know, I would expect a good-sized binder for policies procedures. Not that I'm saying we should have more, but I'm just a little surprised how thin it is. So.
John looks overwhelmed, I think he disagrees. Maybe it's because it's photocopied double-sided.
Does anybody have any comments on them so far? I think this is gonna be a work in progress.
I'm halfway through.
Yeah, yeah.
I will comment that the biggest one that we have to revise is the personnel policy, obviously this discussion started long before I started, and it was kind of tabled until I could get my, my feet wet and a little bit more familiar, but it has taken a backburner, I've read through the policy multiple times, I've met with Betsy a couple of times for her recommendations for things that are payroll recommended, but that is going to be my priority to get that resolved, at least this year.
I'd like to see a lot of that done. All right, so we're in agreement, this is gonna be a working, okay.
Other than the personnel, did you notice anything that, any other policies that need to be updated?
I'm still reviewing them as well, I mean, a lot of them are ones that I've just seen for the first time as well. I mean, I'm pretty familiar with the rules of procedure, the code of conduct, the personnel policy, the investment policy, like the ones that we have to look at yearly, but...
Okay. We didn't have any appointments, uh, review action items for the next meeting. We'll have the polling to discuss.
The polling should be live, we might have something for Kevin Bassett, hopefully.
Okay. And another review of the policies. Anything else? John? No, all right. So. I will now open this up to public comment. If anybody would like to come up to the table, please state your name, your address, and you will have three minutes to speak, and you will not yield your time to anybody else.
Skip Severance, 340 Stage Road, again, I'm on procedures. I'd like to know if there's a formal procedure to invite people to, or employees to the, your meetings, the BOs meetings, either public or non-public?
I'm confused, what do you hope to?
I have no idea, I'm asking you if there's a formal process.
Typically, when we have non-public, we're discussing personnel issues, so therefore, I mean, I don't understand why you would wanna be a part of that, where, you know, personnel policies...
Well, if you go by the personnel policy that you presently have in place, a non-public session with...
We can't discuss personnel issues in non-public with another person in there outside the board, okay?
What? You, you, what?
Sorry.
No.
I wonder if you're misinterpreting what he just said. Oh, maybe I am, go ahead. No, go on.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to ascertain how employees would make it into a non-public session to register a complaint against an individual. In the way in which the policy is written, employees are supposed to go through the chain of command, which then levies that chain of command in some way, shape, or form to the town administrator. And then the town administrator, I believe, goes to the board and does the description of the problems that are going on, or whatever, I don't know. That's just what it seems like to me, in accordance with the policies. It appears in this case that, and I'm talking about the fire chief, but I'm just using that as an example, someone invited six firefighters to a non-public session with the Board of Selectmen. I'm wondering what those procedures are that allows that to happen.
I guess it, can I respond?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so it would, it would depend on the nature of the requests to disclose something in non-public to the Board of Selectmen. There is a chain of command in place, but let's say the complaint is against me as the administrator, or the department head, or what have you, then you go to the next higher superior, which in this case, if it was against me, it would be against the, it would be the Board of Selectmen, or depending on the nature of, I don't necessarily wanna say the complaint, but the concern or the allegation, or whatever it may be, like if it's, if it's a harassment, or discrimination, or something, they don't even, it doesn't even have to go to the Board of Selectmen, it could go to the Chief of Police, it could go to whoever that person is comfortable discussing. So, I think what I was trying to explain to you when you and I talked on Thursday is there's, there's a multitude of complaints, and how they can come in, and how they're then handled.
Orchestrated, yeah.
Yes.
I just, it seems to me that there was a lot more going on than the first identification of a problem associated with the, in the timeline for the, the statement, the town's statement. And so I'm trying to figure out what, how that works.
Your time's up.
I figured it would be. So, you'll see me again, when's the next one? Because I got at least three more questions, I haven't gone beyond the first statement. Okay.
I'll pick up where you left off, it's all right.
Mr. Vilchok, you have three minutes.
Um, so about the unsealing that you guys were talking about from the March meeting, I just wanna be clear, why, why did you guys just decide to keep those sealed? You said until it was over, right? The problem has been resolved, correct? People were terminated, right? So, it's done, so what are we doing?
It's not done, is it not going in the hands of the court right now?
Is it?
You tell me.
I don't know, I'm asking you. You guys just voted to keep minutes sealed, because something was over.
It's not over.
Oh, okay.
Is it not?
They were terminated.
As far, they were terminated, but are they not going through the process as far as the court?
It's no longer a personnel issue, since they were terminated, they're not personnel. It's no longer a personnel issue. Since they were terminated, they're not personnel.
As a board, we...
Yeah, cool. It's all good, man. So another thing, there's a town administrator named Ellen White in Stratford. Is that you? No, that's a heck of a coincidence.
It's just a similarity and it's very close.
I was just wondering. So I've requested over the course of the last few months to be put on the agenda many times and you finally responded and said I was denied. Has anyone ever been denied being put on the agenda before?
I can't speak on prior boards.
Yeah, interesting.
Do you know?
Just seems like, you know, Vilchak, you know, something going on there with Vilchak and...
No, you're denied because it's the same thing over. Okay, sir. All right. You're taking up the time. We have enough to do in the town business to deal with, okay?
Yep.
So we're moving forward.
Moving forward. Okay.
All right.
Starting January 2023, there were six officers on the Nottingham Fire Rescue Department. How many do you have now? You guys know?
Four. Five, five because Kyle Kuster, I believe, is still an officer.
Kuster's gone.
He's gone. He's left employment.
Kuster's gone. You got another one with his foot out the door. You have two left. You have Deputy Chief Curry and Pedersen. You don't have a chief. You don't have any lieutenants left. Great. My dad spent his, good chunk of his life building up that fire department. That new building down the road wouldn't exist if it wasn't for him. All the stuff he did for this town and, you know, back to the complaint and all that stuff. You guys never brought it to him. You never sat down with the guy face to face. You kicked it out to an investigator. You wasted money on a sham investigation. Did you guys read the investigation report, I wonder? Because based on his comments last time about the attorney being handed points, it didn't seem like either any of you took the time to read it. I'm just wondering if you did.
Of course we did.
You did?
Of course.
Oh, okay. All right, good.
Your time's up, sir. Thank you.
See you next week.
Anybody else?
Congrats, Fon.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, we will move into non-public under...
91A32A.
91A32A. Thank you.
Wanna make a motion now?
Yep, yep.
I make a motion for the Court of Selectmen ruling on public for RSA 91A, S2A.
Yeah, that's what she's saying. The motion made by John, seconded by Steve Welch. All roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Thank you, Nottingham.